Good evening, everyone. It's 6:00 PM, May the 6th. The council meeting will now come to order. And now, the invocation will be presented by Councilmember Baker.
Thank you. Our Father who art in heaven, we ask for your blessings on the people who have been told to leave this city in which we live, work, and enjoy its beauty, gift, and creating. Help us as leaders to not just ask first, "How do we fix this?", but what do we need to learn before attempting to fix problems? How might we need to change? And to whom do we need to listen to better serve your people? Remind all of us, because we all forget from time to time, we are not only leaders, but also servants. And act it's our responsibility to serve and give to all. Father, we pray that you may grant us the wisdom and courage to know and to do what is right and good and true. May we speak out when it's time to speak out, and listen patiently and receptive when it's time to listen. We pray that you open all the eyes, hearts, and minds of this community, and they will find and follow your will to benefit all the people of this city. May all of us always be guided by the Spirit of community and by the Spirit of justice in this city. This we pray in your name, Holy Son Jesus. Amen.
Now, please rise and join me with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Renee, would you please call the roar?
Councilmember Frank Bankard.
Present.
Councilmember Lloyd Roberts.
Here.
Councilmember Kim Shaw Elliott.
Present.
Mayor Dave Gaddis.
Here.
City manager Kyle Riefler.
Here.
And city attorney Randy Mora.
Present.
Thank you, Renee. First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Frank Bankard. Do I have a second? Second by Elliott? Councilmember Elliott? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda is approved. All right, we are on to item number two, which is citizen comments. Any citizen who would like to address the council about a topic not already on the agenda, please raise your hand. Wait until they're called on. We ask that you limit your time to no more than three minutes, and remember to write all questions and comments to the council. If any council member would like to respond to citizen comments, please hold your responses until we reach council comments. Would any citizen like to make a comment? Yes, or Mr. Hanson?
John Haines, 22nd Street. Mr. Mayor, council members, I brought this topic up once before. Now, I gotta give you a real-life term update. Friday, on my way to the grocery store, I witnessed a near-perfect side swipe at the traffic light. Car in the outside right-left turn lane completely came into the inside one. How they didn't collide is to the man upstairs. I brought this up before. It's a matter of time before you have a major accident if you had not already had one. I was told the county's studying it. I suggested then that something remedial needs to be done in the interim. I don't know what's going on. I look at the sheriff's report about accidents. It just tells you where the accidents are. It doesn't give you any details or anything like that, but something's gonna happen there, and it's gonna be bad. So I'm just bringing it to the council's attention, and I'm imploring you as a citizen and someone who has rendered aid at too many accidents, we need to get something done yesterday. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. Would any other citizens like to speak? Yes, Ms. Lavenda.
Good evening, everyone. Tammy Lavenda, 97 Harbor Drive. I'm just here representing the Bella Beach Community Foundation. It's our nonprofit, our 501(c)(3) that's pretty newly formed. Just a quick update on the Veterans Memorial. We are currently at approximately 67% of our goals. So thank you to everyone who has donated so far. We really appreciate it. We're still just trying to raise a little bit more money for the sign and then the fountain. And then I have a few more details. There will be a dedicated bricks surround surrounding the fountain. So there's a couple of examples on the board. So they're eight-by-eight bricks, so they're the double size, and they'll be $200. And we're hoping, because there's only 20 of them, that each of them will be dedicated to your loved one who has served in the military. And I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. All right, we're on to item number three, which is a presentation from the Pinellas County Sheriff's Department. I'm sorry, officer, I did not get your name, so would you please tell us who you are and what your title is?
Certainly. Good evening. My name is Sergeant John Shield with Pinellas County Sheriff's Office. I'm here to present the stats that you all have received already previously, which you've all received via email. If you all have any questions about any of the statistics, I will answer them.
All right. Do you have a report?
I do, present.
If you don't mind, just kind of share the highlights of close people in the audience that have not seen that report.
Sure, no worries. So it's broken down in monthly, and we have the, it's kind of six months, I'm sorry, six weeks end. So we're in March, so there isn't crime stats that we have for the month of March of 2024. So in March, we have four people arrested in the city of Bella Beach. They're broken down into different felony misdemeanors, traffic felonies, and broken down into stats. There were 644 events in the city of Bella Beach, with 728 units responding. Units are comprised of deputy sheriffs. There were three traffic crashes in the city for the month of March. They may include accident in the run divided up. We have 212 citations to include warning citations for the city also. They're broken up, I believe 97% of them are listed as parking citations. We have 95 of them are warnings, and 20 are issued with traffic.
Sergeant, any questions or comments for the sergeant? Yes?
Thank you, Sergeant. As you know, it's on the, I guess, the second page, that it does reference an accident involving Coswick Boulevard and Gold Boulevard. Do you have any data on that particular one?
I don't. I don't give in general stats that are broken down. For instance, the deputy activity is broken down to what they outcode on, and what traffic control, suspicious vehicles and such. When it comes to the traffic crashes, it kind of gives a, there's one at 103rd. It's listed as our location of what we utilize for our accident reports. 103 Leaf Street, 3100 Gulf Boulevard, and Howard Drive at the intersection of Gulf Boulevard. I know those are a little, a few of them are a little vague, but that's what we have. So we have the three of those in the city.
Okay. Yeah, I misread that. That's my fault. That was a citation that was awarded on Coswick Boulevard and Gulf Boulevard. So, but I do have another question. I was curious about the two assaults in March of '24. Again, any detail on those?
I don't have any details, no. They're just broken up. We have a uniform. It's a UCF. It's a data that we're collecting, that our analysts collect, and it's within our computer system, kind of generates, and we kind of classify those. But I don't have any details on those reprints about it.
Is there a way, what would be the easiest way for us to get that information online?
Oh, we can look into getting it from the crime analysis and about that specifically.
Right, thank you. Anyone else? I did have a question, Sergeant. There was, over the weekend, there was a pretty serious accident on Gold Boulevard, and I believe it was in San Key. You may have heard about it, may not.
I did. I was actually off this weekend, so this is my first day back to work. I did see it through media. I don't know the details other than it involved a pickup truck and a semi-truck. The details and nuances of that, I do not have.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I guess what we'd like to do is find out more about that, for sure. All right. Anything else? Sergeant, I appreciate you being here tonight. Thank you very much.
It's my pleasure. Happy to be here.
You too. And is Deputy Trump here tonight?
Yes, sir.
Now, we're up to the monthly code enforcement report. How you doing tonight?
How are you, sir?
Good, well.
Again, Deputy Trump with Pinellas County Sheriff's Office. I'm trying to help you guys out with your code enforcement for the month. For the month, I have 34 entries. A lot of them vary and stuff, but what we're basically finding for the month is we're starting to get into that growing season, so we're trying to make sure everybody with their yards and stuff like that. We're trying to implement compliance about that. So we've been doing a lot of patrols there, talking to a lot of people. I get out and I'm outdoors, and I talk to a lot of people and, you know, trying to get them to come back into compliance with that. You'll notice the other big topic was pretty much other enforcement. Other enforcement is a stat that I actually had added to it, but that will vary as far as doing my beach patrols, because I've been trying to get out and do a lot more beach patrols out on the Polaris, and trying to talk to a lot of people out there, making sure everybody's enjoying and being safe. So we also had, I'm sorry, besides that, other enforcement also included a couple of things. We had a jet ski that was unauthorized. It's got the Marina, the city manager helped take care of, along with the rest of the city staff. And we had a boat and a trailer in front yard. I've talked to that donor now twice, and I think we've got that one streamed out. If he takes his boat out, you know, it's gotta go away pretty quick instead of sitting there for a week. So we dealt with that. So for the rest of it, it's pretty minor. We do have one note here that references the 10721st Street property. This property has been in pretty bad shape, especially for the last six months that I've been here. I know a lot of the neighbors have complained about it. The city's been working with it, and there's actually fines that are growing on that property. So right now, just to inform you, there is a title company, and there's actually a for-sale sign in front of it now. But there is a title company that is taking control of the property. It's going into a trust, and the title company will be bringing the property into compliance in the very near future, from what I hear. And I'll keep you guys updated on that as we progress, and I'm sure the city manager will also. But after that, then they are going to work with the city and the attorney in order to try and come up with some type of settlement for all the fines and things that are currently posted on. So any questions?
Councilman?
Yes, I think for the detail regarding the other category, because that was one I had a question about, and that as it approaches 1/3 of the offenses, I'm wondering if that should be broken down in any way for the categories in the future?
I can try to. I can work with the city manager, see if I can break that down for you. But before, like if I went out, I tried to take the numbers and make sure that we have statistics on other things that I'm doing, like the beach patrols and things like that that weren't documented before. So with that, I was able to work with the city manager. At least we at least got that entered, but I can work with him, see if we can break it down a little bit more for you, if that would help.
Sure. Any other questions? Mr. Council?
Thank you for the report, and thank you for bringing up a point about the height of the grass and the clutter. So that's basically 50%. And I think that, I feel very fortunate to see that I live on. Everybody does a great job taking care of those plants. I think that the city overall really wants the city to look as nice as it possibly can.
Yes, sir.
So I think it's wonderful that you are bringing that to our state's attention, those that may not be complying with current rules about grass, and clutter, and things like that. So thank you for doing that.
The simplest way that I can put it without going into, there's a bunch of different details. It's basically grass and weeds. If it's over seven inches, it's not a warning. So just kind of keep the grasses cut and keep them under seven inches. Keep the bushes trimmed, and everybody should be out.
Great, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Next up, item four, a presentation from the Pinellas Suncoast Fire Rescue District by Chief Jeffrey Davidson. Hey, good chief.
Good. May I refer you, councilmembers? Good evening. To present the fire rescue report for the month of April. There were 15 calls for emergency services in Bella Beach, including water vehicle accidents, party events, and fire alarms. We recently outfitted a new jet ski to add to our water rescue fleet, our marine unit fleet, and the training's underway. Hope to have it here on display for you all at the next meeting. Currently, we just finished Coast Guard, water rescue training with the Coast Guard. And once we finish up the training, that unit will be in service. We also have been working, as you know, to purchase the land on the northern end of Indian Rocks Beach, to better serve Bella Beach, and thus move along very well. We'll have the contracts completed in the next week, and we'll move forward. And hopefully, we'll have a new fire station to better serve your area in less than two years. That's the goal. And then our mainland station, which we're in the design phase, we'll continue with that. We're just waiting on some engineering to see what we can do with the retention ponds over there. And keep moving forward.
Right now? Any questions or comments for the fire chief? No? Thank you very much, sir. Happy to be here.
Thanks for having me.
Number five, city attorney report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since our last meeting, I've been researching how different communities have adapted to sign code revisions. I've been gathering that information, including, in addition to just general research, serious public records requests of different communities, and I'm getting that material together. So as directed, I can meet with member Shaw Elliott and have a discourse on gathering that information in a way that will be helpful, and just a series of flow of information. In addition to that, of course, working with the manager on day-to-day issues. We are almost exactly two months post the close of legislative session, and honestly, there is a lot up in the air. Remember, recall that the process is that both chambers pass identical bills. Those bills, if passed in identical form, are at some point transmitted to the governor. The governor signs them or vetoes them. He has 15 days to do so once a bill is transmitted to him. And if the governor does not sign it within those 15 days, it's deemed to be passed. So for those of you who remember the law of the pocket veto in the 90s, it's a pocket approval in our state system. There are many bills that were passed that still have not been sent to the governor, notably the short-term rental bill that a lot of communities were tracking, housing bill, transportation bill. There's just a number of them that are sort of in limbo. That doesn't mean he will be vetoing them. They just have not been sent to him. And there's not necessarily a date certain that they will all be sent by. Most bills are typically sent by now or at least mid-June, because a lot of bills tend to have an effective date of July 1. So you'd want to have them signed at least two weeks out from that, or have a 15-day window before that. So we expect to see a little bit more motion, but if you're, you know, if you track something, or there was a legislative issue that was nearing to your heart during session, and you're wondering why I'm not hearing about this, or why are we not doing anything yet? It ain't over till it's over. It's gotta be signed. So we are tracking that closely, but I do want to make that known. It's a little bit curious. Bunch of theories on why it happens some way, but it is a very, it's a truly arcane process in that it's like the final document sits in a drawer, and until it is summoned, it's out, it's locked in key. And so we're waiting for those bills to die to be summoned by the governor or otherwise get to his desk. So other than that, happy to answer any questions you may have. I also, just because it was a topic of discussion at April's meeting, I continue to remain in weekly contact with the, whether it just be a simple phone call to check in or otherwise, with the attorney for the town of Bella Shore. The parties are both generally amenable to working through towards a revised document under the interlocal agreement. Of course, the details matter, and we'll see where that goes. But there's, at least right now, both parties are postureed towards let's work this out. And so that's where that presently stands, that I think my peer colleague is awaiting some direction similarly. I'm meeting with Kyle, and I'm gonna find whatever UCF community would need addressed or vice versa. And also, recently reached out to the neighbor to meet with him in the same regard. So that's where that is, kind of answering the questions.
I have a question. Where are we on the lookback period? There's an ordinance on the agenda tonight, sorry.
Okay, all right. For some reason, I didn't read it the same way.
Yeah. You may have, if you were tracking it through the entire process, recall that when you first said, you know, "This is a priority. We want this in the council. We want this prioritized." My concern at the time was, it may even go before the planning and zoning board did. And they considered all the provisions, and looking at it, I thought it best to break them out to multiple ordinances. And so that's what kind of preordines this, the plan restrictions that are.
That brought it, concluding that.
It was a little confusing in a row reading, but. I'll make it clear when we get there, Mayor. Thank you very much.
Any questions for the city attorney?
This is no reflection. This is just about, because on the back page, you gave us a letter after the meeting, after the last meeting, April.
Yes, sir.
You sent us, and now, page two, there was a February 28 citation. And Kyle took a run at a storm from resident at the last meeting that there was an unauthorized parking permit that was issued, reflecting that. I don't know if you issued, I don't know if you have a question, but you took a run at a storm. But I visited the 6th Street beach access, and this is what I'm talking about, okay? Now, I go from the construction trade. I'm sympathetic to construction workers. Bella Shores wants to tell us what we can and what we can't do. Meanwhile, they issue these parking permits at will, okay? Now, I've also copied on the back page, Bella Shores Code Parking Permits. And I'm not, I'm just gonna paraphrase. "Such parking permits shall only be issued as may be provided by the Board of Land Commissioners to the property owners in the city of Bella Beach east of Gulf Boulevard and shall be numbered." These guys aren't east of this, east of Gulf Boulevard, all right? They're construction workers. They're given a permit to park here all year. The stipend goes from February until the end of December, all right? Our interlocal agreement also notes who can park in these lots. East of Gulf Boulevard, the residents of Bella Beach. The Deans, from the curb piece woman out, also notes who can park and who can use these lots, and what are the purposes to be used? Beach invading purposes. Now, if Bella Beach and Bella Shores wants to really get along, okay? They have to comply and give us equal treatment, is what I'm saying. So I know you're talking to them, and a lot. And I would bring this up because one day, there was 10 cars parked in Bella, in the 6th Street access, and the one guy backed up. I was coming off the beach. He was two, well, I'm old now, so I can't say. There was two older women, okay? One in a, wasn't a wheelchair, it was a assist. He backed all the way up, two feet from the access point with the grass shorts. And she says, "I can't get around it." So I went up, and I said, "Hey, how about moving your truck?" He says, "I'm busy doing paperwork." Thank God, Robert Shaw, our deputy, comes pulling, and he pulled right out. But what I'm saying is, he had no right to park here. And this is just bad behavior on our part.
Member Baker, I appreciate you bringing this tangible example to my attention. What I would say is, one, we are, as I've stated, I think that the, today's center is in contact with their officials. I think that all those representations working toward a resolution are in good faith. And also caution, as we work through this process, just generally understanding, especially in these small communities, as we see turnover. Like, we're talking about an agreement that goes back almost 20 years, right? And we've seen a lot of turnover in our communities in those 20 years. There's not always an awareness or appreciation, and that doesn't necessarily excuse it away, but I would not suggest that it's necessarily always malicious. And so I agree with you that we need to bring this to their attention, and we need to address it. And this needs to be not just on the list of things we address long-term, but near-term, making them aware of that concern, and I'm happy to do that.
And again, he does lamb ass, and I do, okay?
Yeah.
And I don't think we get any, I don't know what the circumstances were. Like I said, I don't have a problem with construction workers parking any, if they work this.
And we can navigate them. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. I'll make note of that.
Any other questions or comments for the city attorney? Mr. Mora, do you have anything else?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Right. Thank you very much. And now we move on to the city manager report. Mr. Riefler, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. Start off with the Gulf Boulevard undergrounding. Last month, we did a contract with UCF to install the conduit for the rest of the communication portion of the Phase 2 north side, well, north and east side of Gulf Boulevard. And the news is that the material should be arriving within a couple of weeks. I don't think they're gonna get started on that. The Star Mart Movement Project, currently we're still working up from Morgan Drive down to 23rd Street. They are placing the curb, and you know, they'll do the milling and resurfacing for those four streets. And after that, the plan is to come down to this south portion, which is gonna be the 9th Street, Harvard Drive, Cedar Drive, Spruce Drive, and Palm Drive. Speaking on that, I'm gonna try to share a screen, but member Shaw Elliott and I went out and met with two property owners for the options that we were looking at during our work session. The concern was, would they be willing to have that pump station and power panel from their properties? What we found in meeting with the neighbors is that they would prefer not to have the pump station out in front. That would be between 907 and 905 Harvard. So since then, just learning that from the residents, and they're actually Mr. Will and Mr. Browner both here tonight to support the project, we started looking at other options. Right now, given that the previous options we have aren't gonna work out, our next best option is going to be, what I'm showing on the screen right now, which is gonna be our option one, which would require an easement with the property in the screen, which is 125 9th Street. We feel they may be willing to give an easement, because the idea is to run from the corner where that manhole is, slightly into the property, which is all grass area. But in doing so, it avoids, there's a line of oak trees. If we couldn't get an easement, and we have to go north, we would be running into a lot of trees, and then be required to, we have to remove them. So that's our next best effort. The residents in the area are helping us get in contact with the owner of that property to hopefully negotiate being able to ease that easement so that we can reduce the flooding in the area. The other option we're looking at, I don't wanna jump to my other. The other option we're looking at, I don't want to jump to my other. This shows the better. So this is a shot I took from the corner, and, so this, on the left, it says pump station option one, the easement, so that kind of shows you the line of sight going from that manhole. They have to cut to the west a little bit, the property line for 125 Ninth Street is slightly to the west of that telephone pole directly in front of the screen, but with the easement, we'd be able to move more over into the grass area to get the pump station roughly just past the property before it got to the existing pipe that runs from the retention pond. The idea would be to put the pump station in that area and then trench the force, force line across to the swell through the road. The other option, pump station option two, that would be to go directly across the road and position it, we'd have to keep it to the south of the swell, because we couldn't cross over the swell, and we can't go through the pipe in the road, but that would be the less preferred option to, plus the pump station in that general area, as far away from being from the property on our tops to eject the water into the swell safely. And I have some arrows too, that kind of show. Option one, and option two. And I spoke with Larry Flute, a city engineer, he's aware of what we're looking into, it's really pending, we can get in contact of the property owner pulling 25 Ninth Street, so hopefully we can do that soon to narrow down, if that is a feasible option, then we can get him to start drafting the plans, get a process in it. The one, both these options, we can still move the project down to this area, and at this point, we'd be able to replace the valley curb and mill up to just north of Mr. Brown's driveway, and then what we could do is not do the replacement of the remainder of Harvard Drive, the older store park, we could do that in the future. With this project, if we felt we still needed to do so, the curbs and the street aren't in horrible conditions, I don't think it would actually affect anything, but that way we wouldn't be refurbishing the streets and curbs only to tear them up again. So that's a quick update on where we're at with that. Hopefully, I was able to show you the ideas, and you can understand. I don't know if later we want to give an opportunity to the two property owners to speak on it, but they, they support the project, and they've been working with us to find a reasonable way to put the pump station and make it work.
Anything else?
I do have, Mr. Baker has a question.
Sure.
Option one, that house, doesn't that take a lot of flooding?
The house at 125 Ninth Street does take a lot of flooding, so we felt that they would, they would feel strong, they're like.
That could just like, that sure was worth just to reach it away, if they were like that. That was, well, that was a day after I came in the city hall.
Right, right, thank you. So again, what, I will keep the city council aware of where we're at on that and moving our progress as we try to get in contact with that resident. The co-review project, Mr. Turner is compiling all his recommendations for us to review, and we will be putting together the draft ordinances. Again, most of them are going to be more restrictive, we don't want to get started for review, to get a look over and, for more discussion on what we're recommending. The Golf Boulevard, and Causeway Boulevard intersection study, we did have an update on that, the Calis County Public Works invited member Robert and I out on the first, I believe it was Wednesday, and they showed us the camera that they installed at the intersection. They, the camera is like, is kind of the best technology they have, that they're using within the county right now. When they learned about our, our, our need to study the intersection and to analyze if it's working in its most efficient way, they, they thought it was an opportunity, then we kind of looked out and on and got it installed, so now that we have it, it's, operates on AI software, it's very high tech, they showed us real live imaging of the hi-dub camera, identifying vehicles, watching both of the intersection, it can, it operates on demand, so there has, I've noticed personally when they asked, and, and it's mainly because the computer is watching the traffic patterns, and it's changing the lights, not on a timer, but more so in analyzing what best way to change the lights to get the most traffic through the intersection. I've noticed an increase in, well, I should say, increase in backup. I've noticed early in the morning, one of the major complaints that residents had was, you know, pulling up till late, six a.m. in the morning, nobody's at the intersection, nobody's coming in any direction, you're sitting there for almost over a minute, which seems like an eternity, et cetera. That's gone away. I don't know if the previous, whatever they are using, motion sensor system wasn't picking up, but this, this new technology is definitely doing a better job.
I have a question about this, actually two. First, when, when was that system installed?
How long was it, early April?
That's probably why whenever the turn signal has turned off and it's two green straight through lights, occasionally it'll turn back on and let you make that left turn if you're headed south, because it's detecting cars, there's nothing coming, it must just automatically. By any chance, does this technology bullet aid in the, maybe resolve any concerns that were addressed?
It, it should be able to, because it, it can recognize near misses and obviously collisions. To their knowledge, now, I told them their money for like, a matter of weeks, they showed us a report example, they showed all the counts, they can get the data on how, like, they could tell the speeds, the traffic was moving through in all different directions, they could tell near misses, they can tell when a car comes out of the lane, like, it's very, very complex. They offered, they're going to send me a report based on their recommendation, and what their recommendation to us is at this moment, that they feel the intersection works most efficiently with this technology installed the way it is, with the two lanes going left. What they did feel, when they really looked it over and analyzed the numbers, was that the, when you turn left, you have the, what I should say, the lightning lines that guide the two lanes as you turn, they felt that we could use another set, not in, not just in between those lanes, but another set on the, or, which would be like, east lane, turning left to go for causeway, to help them, guide them to not cut short on the stop bar. Another thing they thought that would make a difference is repainting those lines all the way through, so once you make the turn, you're heading towards the bridge, they're kind of worn out, so they, they felt like it was, marking it better would, would help traffic stay in, stay in their lanes, but at the same time, as soon as you turn to Causeway Boulevard, there's a merge arrow, so I guess, you know, the guys that work at the traffic division felt like that could be playing into effect, because as soon as people turn, they see that merge arrow, so it's causing them to feel like they got to get right over. There's plenty of space that, you know, it extends all the way up to Cedar Drive, and they felt that that might also help with that intersection. It's not perfect, but where we're at right now, with the new camera they got in there, they really can tell what's going on, they can, you know, like I said, they can tell if there was an accident, they offered to share this data with us, so as we move forward, I think that if we have questions, you know, concerning near misses, concerning accidents, speeds, they can provide that data, and I think it would be very helpful.
I don't want to keep talking about traffic all night, but I would say that I think we've suggested possibly moving that stop bar, the line that's painted, that they, white line, it tells where you're supposed to stop your car at as you're waiting to make a left turn or a right turn at the end of causeway. If that thing was moved back, they could make a less drastic turn, and I believe that that would help, because right now, it's almost impossible, if you're doing the speed limit and you go around there, you're going to go the other way. So that's something that I think we have discussed before, but maybe it just hasn't been brought up. Any questions or comments for the city manager?
Yes, yeah. First of all, I think the county did a good job, and Kyle did a good job making sure that they followed through, I think we brought this to their attention sometime last year, so Kyle didn't let that just lay there, talked them a couple of times, and, and out of this issue, I think the county did a good job of increasing and putting in a system that was better. It's always good to do better. So the problem is still there, though. Mr. Hantek, they showed us video, which was pretty awesome. Every time there's a near miss, the camera system takes a picture, a video of that. There are a lot of near misses making that left-hand turn when there are two vehicles making a left-hand turn. There's a lot of variables that go into that. I think the, and we talked about this, the spring break time of the year, we have a lot of people down here that are not familiar with the traffic flows. Those are the people that don't realize that when two cars are making a left-hand turn off the Gulf Boulevard on the causeway, you have to go out and make effectively a ninety-degree turn. If you start thinking less than that, somebody's going to have an issue. Also, we have the fine folks that travel down from the north at that time of the year. Many of those drivers are not familiar with those two left turns necessarily, but it is just a matter of time. Now, when the county made the recommendation of staying with the two lanes and county correcting the, they based that on traffic flow, so they were looking to see how many vehicles are getting queued up since they made the changes with the new technology, and that has improved immensely. And that was my first issue when I was calling for the two lanes, when cars have to sit there for a long period of time, it's not effective. They, in my opinion, they fixed that problem, which is great, because you can see the flows going through, it just doesn't queue up anymore, which is awesome. But the fact that we still have two lanes turning left, and they recognize the fact that the merge distance is very short, that problem's not going to go away, and I hope we don't get in this scenario where, and we all see this in life sometimes, people are saying, "Man, that could be a problem, that could be a problem," and we wait until something happens, you often have these, and then we say, "Oh, gosh, we need to change that." Let's, let's think this through, if it needs to be changed, one of the options can still be to turn that back to a single lane and move it further back and take that little island out. The county has assured me that if we do take it out, and for some particular reason we find out that it's not working as well as we thought, they have no problem in putting it back. But there is an option, I believe, still, in coming back one single lane and going through down through that bi-directional lane, so eliminate two vehicles turning left. But just wanted to make sure everybody understands it is a big improvement, like Kyle said, the cars are not queuing up there, because in the morning, perfect example, I had citizens talk to me, that when they first opened up that double turn light, everything was set on a timer, that was, that was designed based on traffic flow. Now it's in a domain base, which is, works terrific. So if you come up here in the morning, and, and the cameras recognize there's nobody coming from causeway, there's nobody coming from the south to the north, it immediately changes back to green. So that works great. But I still think the issue, when, when I sat there for just five minutes and saw those near misses, Kyle, oh, it's all horrible. And you don't really see if it's a near miss, because it shows you in that one video we saw, that it looks like you're going to hit, and then it doesn't show you that anymore. It just kind of goes out of the camera. But it's something I think we need to discuss and make sure that that's taken care of. My biggest concern is somebody actually walking on the sidewalk, and those two cars battling for a merged position, and somebody gets pushed up on the sidewalk. That's my biggest concern. The speeds of the cars are going is just going to be a couple of dents, and somebody's going to be sad. But if it goes up on that curb and hits somebody, that won't be any fun.
You're also sharing those links with firecakers.
Yes.
Yes. Definitely, definitely something we'll keep an eye on, and yes, Councilman Rode.
Thank you, sir. To comment, to echo your comment as far as Mr. Roberts, I know I frequently make a left-hand turn there from the causeway onto Gulf, and I, I feel vulnerable, because there are many, many times where you're sitting there and someone doesn't pay a lot of attention, makes that left-hand turn, and it's practically a hell of a situation. Yeah. So looking back on that, would be very helpful. The other comment there is that, I think when you walk in that area, I will not walk at that intersection, because if you take a step off the curb at Gulf and causeway, crossing across the causeway, to the back, we'd like to do twelve street each access in that direction. People come lining around from Gulf, and again, you're very vulnerable, because they can't see you, and they come very quickly around that corner, and you stand so in the back. The pedestrian area can be adjusted in some way. I instead just cross Ninth Street one. It's a better way to turn into. And I could also turn back to the Star Mark Movement Project, and I want to thank you very much, Mr. Keith, for all of your collaboration and work on this, and thanks to our neighbors. Thank you very much. And my thanks to our neighbors for all of their careful consideration of all of this. When we look at the two options, the two new options that we reviewed tonight, the benefit of both of them is that in option one, it literally is only going through grass, and we preserve the wonderful lineos that we have along our easement. The issue is that we have to have permission to approach into that grass, but it's a very good option, and it crosses the road, it places the, it doesn't, doesn't cross, doesn't cross the road at all, right, can we get it across? Option one?
The pump station would be up on the retention pond near the pipe where it goes into the swell, but from there, it would just be that eight inch, so the pump, the pump, just the water over, under, our sex can be through the street, out into the swell.
Okay, yeah, so it doesn't cross the road at all. So that option also creates potential cost savings, because we're not disrupting the road, we could address those a little bit. As well as on option number two, it did involve potentially crossing the road, but we don't have any permission for any. but we don't have any permission for any one, and hits directly into the creek, which is another good option for the water flow. But both options offer a pause on any further construction further on the street, because the portion right out here has good curb system, and the road is in very good shape. So we put a pause on any of that, and it might become permanent, and therefore more cost savings into the project. So we repress that.
Yeah. So both those options were important, because what we're trying to do is get the current project down to the Knight Street area to get those improvements done. And I was talking to Mr. Foytina today about getting with the contractor to stop earlier at Harbor and just not do those portions, because that way, we're not doing anything that we're gonna tear up later. So if we want to get that done, we can build it off of the future project, or even as is, we'd still be able to get the two F-type grade inlets in it as well, just not resurface the street right there until we know we're done. So whatever, we'll keep you up to date with it.
Any other questions or comments for the city manager?
So we've released the RFP for auditing services. We have questions coming in on May fourteenth, and it's due May thirty-first. From there, we'll call back the I committee to review. Quickly, I have the Florida City County Manager Association Conference from May twenty-ninth to May thirty-first. I will be in Orlando, but still working, answering emails. And I don't know if anyone noticed, but we did get the carpet changed out in this room. One thing we were not satisfied, and neither was the installer, you can see some seam lines. So the actual manufacturer came out, and they're going to replace all of it, because they weren't satisfied with the product either. I mean, it looks pretty good, but it's not perfect. When the sun catches it, you do see some lines you're not supposed to see. And they think it's just because they have a little bit thicker padding to it, and the machine that cut it just didn't cut it correctly. So they're potentially gonna be coming out for me doing it.
It's like, well, that work to get out.
But we like it. It looks nice.
Looks very nice.
And then, lastly, this month, I'd like to, once I get my budget draft, just set up individual meetings, whether we do it virtually or in person, just so these council members to go through the first draft of the budget before we have our first work session.
Good idea. All right. Any other questions or comments? You've got enough anyway, right?
Yeah.
All right. Now, we're on item seven, City Clerk Report. As frolics you have before.
Just, we've been working as business as usual. I have nothing further to record.
You're doing a great job. Anyone have questions for the city clerk? All right. Now, we are on to the consent agenda, items eight and nine. This is for approval of the April eighth, twenty twenty-four City Council meeting minutes, and the April twenty-second, twenty twenty-four City Council work session minutes. Do I have any motion to approve?
Motion to approve the consent agenda has been approved.
Motion made by Frank Baker. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Lloyd Roberts. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right. Consent agenda passes. Now, we're on to the regular agenda, item ten. This is consideration of accepting the annual comprehensive financial report for fiscal year ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, presented by Salt Marsh Cleveland and Gunn, certified public accountants. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. My name's Chuck Landers. I'm with Salt Marsh Cleveland and Gunn. We've had the privilege of serving as the city's auditors for several years, with our predecessors before that. Tonight, I'm going to present the annual comprehensive financial report, not in detail, but in summary. I believe everybody's been given a copy at this point. Before getting started, I just want to say thank you to Kyle for your assistance with the audit process. There's no way we can do it without you, and especially then Heather with the ADR test CPA. I don't know if you all work with Heather very much one-on-one, but she is a tremendous asset to the city. Very fortunate to have her. In the packet of booklet, I should say, return to page one, which is after all the room that you have to get through. So it's about ten or eleven pages in. It's our letterhead, and this is the independent auditor's report. It's a multi-page report, but I'm only gonna read the first two paragraphs. These are the ones that I would consider the most important out of these pages. These are the opinions paragraphs under the report on financial statements. "We have audited the accompanying financial statements of the governmental activities, the business-type activities, each major fund, and the respective budgetary comparison for the general fund of the city of Bel Air Beach, Florida, the city, as of and for the year ended September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, and the related notes to the financial statements, which collectively comprise the city's basic financial statements as listed in the table of contents." This next paragraph is the important one. "In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects the respective financial position of the governmental activities, the business-type activities, each major fund, and the respective budgetary comparison for the general fund of the city as of and for the year ended September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, and the respective changes in financial position and where applicable, cash flows thereof for the year then ended in accordance with the county principles generally accepted in the United States of America." That's what's called an unmodified opinion. This is a clean opinion. This is the best that we can give and the best that you can receive. The next several pages are the basic financial statements and the notes. I'm not going to go through these in detail, like I said, but there are a few that I'll just point out if you don't mind following along with me. On page seventeen, page seventeen is what's called the statement of net position. This shows the assets and the liabilities and the net position of the city. "As of September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three," this is a snapshot. The numbers were different the day before, they were different the day after, but it's what they look like on this day. When I begin on page seventeen, the state of net position. Just above the middle of half of the page, you see total assets, twenty-four million, three hundred and twenty-two thousand in the far right column. So you have the governmental activities in the middle column, and the business-type activities next to that, and then the total column. Again, twenty-four point three million total assets. Total liabilities jumping down towards the bottom of the page, three point eight, almost three point nine million, which leaves net position of twenty million, four hundred and forty-seven thousand, of which ten point nine million you all have invested in your capital assets, leaving nine point five million as understated. Very healthy net position. I commend you for that. So again, that's page seventeen, the state of the net position. The next page, page eighteen. This is the statement of activities, and this attempts to show the expenses and the revenue, and then revenue again. It's, in my opinion, this is a confusing statement to look at, and so I'm not going to take you through this. Instead, if we turn to page twenty-one, I believe this is a more readable format to follow and go through. Page twenty-one, this is the statement of revenues and expenditures and changes in fund balance for the governmental funds. We see that there's a column for the general fund and a column for the Capital Projects Fund. A third of the way down the page, total revenues, three point three million for the general fund, a little over two million for the Capital Projects Fund, for its total governmental revenues of five point three, almost five point four million. The middle third of the page shows the expenditures, total expenditures for the general fund, a little over two million. Capital Projects Fund, just under two point two million, for a combined of four point two, four million, two hundred and fifty thousand roughly in expenditures for the two funds. Then, the bottom third of the page, you see these are other financing sources and uses. The general fund did transfer one point one million to the Capital Projects Fund, but overall, the net other financing sources was three hundred eighty-one thousand, which consisted of debt proceeds. If you're looking at this from a business perspective, this would be roughly what net income would be. So in the general fund, you see net change in fund balance, a positive one hundred and seventy-three thousand. For the Capital Projects Fund, a positive balance, a positive increase of one million, three hundred and thirty-five thousand, for a combined one million, five hundred and nine thousand. Increases all across the board. If you turn to page twenty-five, page twenty-five is the statement of revenues and expenses and changes in net position for proprietary funds. These are your business-type funds. You have the Stormwater Fund and Marina Fund, are the two funds that the city operates. Again, this is looking at the revenues and the expenses. The revenues for the Stormwater Fund, nine hundred and seventy-five thousand. The Marina Fund, seventy-eight thousand, for a combined million, fifty-three thousand. Their expenditures, two hundred and thirty-two thousand for the Stormwater Fund, seventy-five thousand, almost seventy-six thousand for the Marina Fund, for a combined three hundred and eight thousand. What does that yield? That yields a net increase in net position of seven hundred and forty-three thousand roughly for the Stormwater Fund, three thousand dollars for the Marina Fund, combined seven hundred and forty-five thousand. So again, positive net increases across the two funds added to it. The next several pages, there's some more statements, but then you get into the notes and the financial statements. There's only just a few notes that I want to point out. If you turn to page forty-four, page forty-four, at the top of page forty-four, this is note four. And the reason I point this out is this is concerning the receivables of the city, so money that's owed to the city. In the general fund, the accounts receivable, three hundred and thirty-four, almost three hundred and thirty-five thousand. And underneath the chart that you see there, I'm just gonna read this, this one paragraph. This is on page forty-four, it's note four. "Accounts receivable for the general fund include two hundred and eighty-two thousand and fifty-three dollars from a resident of the city for code violations for failure to meet construction scheduled timelines ordered by special master on May nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. The city has no intention to forgive these fines, but believes the balance will be fully collectible. Therefore, the city has not recorded an allowance as of September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three." That's just a little unique to what you all have in the city, so that's why I point that out as a disclosure for you. The next note disclosure I would point out is on page forty-five, sorry, forty-six. Forty-six is note nine, the bottom of the page. These are the non-current liabilities of the city. This lists the loans, the bonds, and the compensated absences. The top half of the table, there are the governmental activities. At the end of the year, there were one point, a million, nine hundred and thirteen thousand of non-current liabilities, we call long-term. And then underneath that, the business-type activities, they have long-term or non-current liabilities of one point seven million. So again, just pointing out what the liabilities are for the city. Now, we're gonna jump almost to the very end. Page eighty-six. "Under governmental auditing standards, we're required to issue a few more reports." On page eighty-six is what's called the independent auditor's report on internal control over financial reporting and on compliance and other matters based on an audit of financial statements performed in accordance with governmental auditing standards. Lots of words on this page. The middle section of this page is called internal control over financial reporting. It describes what a material weakness is and what a significant deficiency is. I'm gonna jump to the next and the last sentence on this page. It says in part, "During our audit, we did not identify any deficiencies in internal control that we consider to be material weaknesses." That's the part of that page you wanna know. If you turn to the next page, the top of the page, this is on page eighty-seven, "The compliance and other matters." Last sentence in that top paragraph. "The results of our tests disclose no instances of non-compliance or other matters that are required to be reported under governmental auditing standards." Again, I would consider that to be the important sentence on that page. The next page is the beginning of the management letter. The management letter is presenting information that is required, some more specifically for the state of Florida. There's one section that I do need to point out. It's the very last section, on the last, on the last paragraph on page eighty-nine, so the second page of this letter. This is the additional matters paragraph, so it's just additional matters. I'll just read it. "Section ten point five five four one I three, rules of the auditor general requires us to communicate non-compliance with provisions of contracts or grant agreements or abuse that have occurred or likely to have occurred that have an effect on the financial statements that is less than material." Again, I want to point out, "that is less than material, but warrants the attention of those charging governments, the city council. In connection with our audit, we noted the following control deficiencies. During testing of the city's disbursements, it was noticed six out of the fifteen vendors tested that were issued material payments during the fiscal year were not registered with E-Verify. The city entered into a contract with one vendor which explicitly listed terms related to E-Verify. This vendor also does not appear to be enrolled in E-Verify and is not registered as an active entity on the Florida Department of State website, sunbiz.org." So just a little, little background there. We're not saying that this is a material problem. It's just something that came up during our testing. We've discussed it with Kyle. The vendor in question, I believe you all are working out, to make sure that you get the contracts, the name of the contract correct, or the name and the contract correct, and that if they would need to be issued at ten ninety-nine, that you all would take care of that as well. So just again, not a material item, but it's something that came up in our testing, and so we needed to present that to you. And then the very last thing, on page ninety-one, this is the independent accountants' report on compliance with section two one eight dot four one five Florida statutes. Section two one eight dot four one five Florida statutes is concerning the investment of public funds during the year ended September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. And the next to the last paragraph on this page says, "In our opinion, the city of Bel Air Beach, Florida complied in all material respects with the aforementioned requirements for the year ended September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three." That concludes presentation. Welcome. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Mr. Landers, do we have any questions that we would like to ask?
Yes, sir.
So everything there seemed very, very positive, with the exception of that you referenced on page eighty-nine. Is there anything that you can recommend that we can do so that we don't have a scenario where some of the vendors that we contract fail or not registered with E-Verify?
Sure, absolutely. I would recommend, as you onboard a new vendor or engage in business with them, make sure that you get a, the W, I want to say before, I'm not sure if that's the right number at this point. I've got taxes going through my head also. But W nine, I believe, is the correct form. So you get their full name, their, the type of entity that they are, and their EIN number, and then just checking, again, before activating a new vendor, check SunBiz, make sure that they are registered, that they're active in the state of Florida. If they require some type of professional license, look at that, or CPA firm, you can check my name and our firm to make sure that we're properly licensed as well. Just a little bit of due diligence that we give, I think would do good.
All right. Thank you. Other questions or comments? All right. Let's go to the citizens for comments. Thank you, thank you very much. Would any citizen like to make comments on this report before I ask for a motion to approve this, to accept this report? Let's see if it comes. Everybody okay? All right. In that case, council, I'm gonna need a motion to accept this financial report. Motion made by Frank Baker. Do I have a second?
Second.
If that would be councilmember, Elliot. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you so much. Great report and wealth of information. Report is accepted. Now, we're on to item number eleven. This is consideration of appointment to the planning and zoning board. Luke Badoing is...
Did we skip citizens' comments for the Stormwater system?
It's just in the management report. Yeah, it's how it's discussed just in the management report, so it's not a citizen's comment. Is Mr. Badoing here tonight? Yes, sir. Would you like to, would you like to speak to address the council and introduce yourself? How are you, sir?
I'm well, thank you. I'm Luke Boglin. I live on six three. I've been living in Bel Air Beach since eighty-seven. I've seen many good... I've seen many good projects taking place. I've seen some not so good, and, but the majority have been good. And I love living in Bella Beach. And if I can contribute myself time to be of service to the city, well, so yeah, I'm willing to give you the time. And I have been in real estate out of Florida for many years, not only in Florida, but also in Massachusetts. I own several properties. I remodel them, I flip them. And I don't know what else to say other than I'm willing to work with you. And I think we had an issue not too long ago in six-three with a property that was being requesting a subdivision. And that was not, it was not meeting the requirements of the city. And I voiced my opinion on that. And I complimented the member of the committee for bringing it to the attention of the rest of the citizens of this beautiful city of ours. So I'm applying, and that's about it.
Would you mind hanging out for a minute? Let's see if council would like to ask you any questions? Any questions? Yes, Mr. Baker?
Outstanding resume. I think we should tackle you. We really do want to employ you. Because it's a great resume.
You're welcome. Well, thank you, thank you.
Any others?
I have no questions.
Alright, I'm going to have to go to the citizens for comments, so please have a seat, and we'll see if anyone else would like to speak.
Thank you.
Any citizens like to comment on this topic? Alright, seeing as they are not, citizen comments are now closed. Council, I'm going to need a motion to appoint Mr. Luke Bedoin. Did I say that right, sir?
You said it again.
Okay, to the planning and zoning board. Motion to appoint. Okay. Motion made by Mr. Baker, do I have a second?
Thank you.
Second by Mr. Roberts. Mr. Baker, do you have the floor?
I think it's a great resume, like I said. I really appreciate you volunteering your service.
Thank you.
I agree. I think you'll be a great asset for the city. Any other comments or questions? Alright, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Alright, thank you so much for serving our city, and welcome to planning and zoning. Alright, we are on to the mysterious item number twelve. It helps when your flash drive is fully engaged. It was all for a run. It was just the strangest thing. Okay, so this is for consideration of ordinance twenty-four-dash-zero-two. Mr. Mora, could you please read the ordinance, then provide a brief summary of what it all means?
Happily, Mr. Mayor, this is ordinance number twenty-four-dash-zero-two. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Bella Beach, Florida. Amending the Bella Beach Code of Ordinances, subpart B, Land Development Code, chapter ninety-four, zoning, article one in general, section ninety-four-dash-two definitions. To amend the definition of substantial improvement, to reduce the look-back period from substantial improvement calculations down from five years to one year. And amending article five supplementary district regulations, division one generally, section twenty-four, ninety-four-dash-two-fifty-five alterations improvements and repairs to align with floodplain ordinance requirements, providing for implementation, providing for resolution of conflicts, providing for separability, and providing for an effective date. This has been a reading ordinance number twenty-four-dash-zero-two, by title only, on the first reading, Mr. Mayor. This is, again, in the spirit of the land development code review that this council has undertaken. We are, we are implementing those amendments that are, the city does not deem to be more burdensome or restrictive, but rather less burdensome or restrictive pursuant to the restrictions of Senate Bill two-fifty, or two-eighty, I'm sorry, I think it's Senate Bill two-fifty, adopted during the two thousand and twenty-three legislative session. In this amendment, what we're doing, and you can see the, the five-year calculation actually comes from the definition of substantial improvement in your code. It's a little hard to see because we do everything through, strike through and underline. But if you're looking at the definition on page two of four for this ordinance where it says substantial improvement definition towards the right on the second line, and also the like seventh line, you can see five-year has been stripped out and one-year has been underlined. And that's, that's substantively where that definition and guidance comes for your administrators in your code. So we're changing the substantial improvement calculus to be a one-year look back as opposed to a five-year look back. And then also, because this is a consonant amendment, or consistent amendment as far as being related to FEMA regulations, and this is also came at the encouragement of Mr. Serna and with the manager's review, where it provides under the remodeling language, it says, presently, it says, any permit application for which the total value exceeds a certain dollar threshold of twenty thousand shall be required to have a certified appraisal. We've removed that requirement, saying market value shall be determined as defined in section seventy-four-dash-one-thirty-four. And the second, section seventy-four-dash-one-thirty-four sets forth a few options for that appraisal not limited, or for that valuation not limited to a certified appraisal. And so that's what we're doing there, again, making it less restrictive, not enhancing the requirements. And so those are these two amendments, and again, these have been discussed previously in the abstract during your code review, and this is the ordinance implementing them on first reading. We'll still have to do a second reading, or this to pass tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mora. Before we take this to the council, Bedoin for citizen comments. Yes, sir. Yes, come right on.
John Hancing, Twenty-Second Street, it's not so much a comment, it's more a question. The city attorney referenced they, they sent a bill two-eighty. So we're being forced to reduce the look-back based on the state law that I'm assuming has already been signed into law. I'm just trying to get a little clarification. And something about FEMA maps, so that's all thrown into this. I'm trying to better understand it.
Let me go to council discussion. I'm sure someone will try to break light to this.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for the council? Alright, citizen comments are closed. Council, I'm going to need a motion to approve ordinance twenty-four-dash-zero-two.
Mr. Mayor, I would like a great honor of moving that this ordinance be adopted as proposed.
Okay, I'm going to give that to council member Elliot. Do I have a second? Second, second by Frank Baker. Mayor? Yes, sir.
If I may, just to inform the dialogue of the council, address the inquiry that was posed based on the comment from the, from the member of the public. The, during my, during my opening explanation, I referenced Senate Bill two-fifty during the two thousand and twenty-three, not this legislative session, the last. What that bill did was it was passed post-Gian and Nicole, and provided that within, nowhere within a hundred miles of landfall of those storms, of which Bella Beach is within a hundred miles of landfall of those storms. Again, landfall might be multiple places, but the other thing, you cannot adopt any land restricted, land development code provision that is more burdensome or restrictive. And so as we have done our land development code review, some things we've said, hey, maybe we need to tighten this up or make this a little more restrictive. These are not those. As it relates to changing the look-back from five years to one year, that's a legislative decision that this body has made based on input from its residents, a study that the student had presented, and other, other legislative inputs that each of you individually considered. This is not a mandate, this is legislative discretion being exercised in terms of changing the look-back period from five-year to one-year, and all the benchmark comparisons you've done. So that's why we're here, I just want to be clear. This is not pursuant to any...
Thank you. Councilmember Elliot, you have the floor.
We want to thank our mayor for bringing this to a quick resolution as we have reviewed our sub-ordinances, but this is all...
It wasn't, you got a minute? Maybe just pull it a little closer to you, have a feel, and then take it over.
Got to get it on, on record also. But we want to thank our mayor for bringing this issue up as we were reviewing our ordinances and we were looking for improvements. This is something certainly that the city has struggled with for a long time. Our citizens have struggled with this. There is no requirement anywhere in other statutes or regulations that would require five-year look-back. We support FEMA's rules in terms of trying to provide for the flood management, but there's no purpose to a five-year look-back and certainly support having a one-year look-back.
Thank you very much. Other comments?
Yeah, I think the important issue here is, the only negative part of five-year to one-year is we have to hold requirements come in rather than wait five years. And I don't think probably ninety to ten percent of the citizens understand this, David. When you buy a house and someone did a lot of repairs to the house that you bought, that gets taxed onto that five-year look-back, if it was stayed a five years. So if your house is appraised, let's say, and this is FEMA's structure of the house, it's not your entire property, it's just the structure of your house. So if your house is at three hundred thousand dollars appraised, you can only do a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in repairs, modifications, substantial improvements. So some people put new windows in, put a roof on, you could have seventy-five thousand dollars tied up, and you didn't even know it when you purchased the house. Wham-o, a hurricane comes, you got eighty thousand dollars in repairs, the county will tell you to tear the house down. Alright, because you're over that hundred and fifty thousand dollar. And we had a resident that beat up on Kyle and come and do anything but follow the code, okay, to the letter of the law. In fact, he tried to help me out a million times, and the county said tough, it was over, what, ten, twelve thousand dollars?
Yeah, we grossly calculated him when it was...
And, and she's still out of it, she's still out of her own. I mean, it's just, it's, it's a horrible situation. And reducing this now to one year is really just common sense.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Okay, I'll let you Mr. Roberts. Alright, I, I do think that this is a good, good thing for our city. It's, it's also going to help us maintain the character that we love about Bella Beach. It's going to help us keep our homes in the spirit of the small hometown community, beachfront community that brought us all here. So it's not going to solve the world's problems. And I thought that zero was maybe too little, and it could be problematic in the future. And it might actually put us on someone's radar. So I think one year is, is appropriate, and I think in the long run, this is, is the right way to go. So we would like to vote on this now. Alright, would any of you mind calling the roll, please?
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Elliot?
Aye.
Mayor Gannis?
Aye. Alright, so the ordinance passes unanimously, and we will vote again on this. Thanks, Mora. Thank you, everyone, for working so hard on this. I'd also like to thank the planning and zoning board taking a look at this. Alright, now we're on to item number thirteen, consideration of ordinance twenty-four-dash-zero-three. Mr. Mora, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is city Bella Beach ordinance number twenty-four-dash-zero-three. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Bella Beach, Florida, amending Bella Beach Code of Ordinances, subpart B, Land Development Code, chapter ninety-four, zoning, article four, districts, division three residential O R L district two, section ninety-four-dash-two-twenty, minimum living areas and setbacks. To reduce the side setback for specified lots in Bella Beach First Division subdivision, providing for implementation, providing for resolution of conflicts, providing for separability, and providing for an effective date. This has been a first reading ordinance number twenty-four-dash-zero-three by title only. As you can see here, again, in the strike through and underline on page two of three for this ordinance, page one forty-seven of the PDF, the lot change here is in the lots one, two, and three row, that is the second, or the first substantive row of numbers in that table there. On the side setback, you see we're reducing the side setback from fifteen to seven, which is why it is not more burdensome or restrictive, it is reducing the setback. And that's to make it consistent with other side setbacks you see, such as in units A, C, E, and D in the area. This was presented initially by a particular property owner. Again, we're not zoning to a specific property unit, but rather to lots one, two, and three, because your land development code has different side setbacks based on platted lots, that's done in this format. So we're keeping the format, just changing one little line here from fifteen foot setback to seven. If there's any more specific inquiries, I think Kyle can provide, rather manage a reefer, can provide additional detail of PP, but that's the proposed ordinance. As with the last ordinance, you have a business impact estimate as required by statute, and otherwise, if it passed tonight, this will pass, and this will have to pass on a second reading at a later date.
Thank you, Mr. Mora. Before we go into discussion, do you have any citizen comments? Yes, sir, Mr. Hancing, we'll vote him here. Yes, sir, please come up and give us your name and address, please.
My name is Scott Brown, address is nine zero seven Harbor Drive. I am lot one of this area, and I just wanted to introduce myself and express my support for the change. I understand this is the first reading, and there's a second reading next month. I'm going to be out of town for that reading. I just didn't want it to appear that I wasn't interested, or very interested, and so I won't be here for a second, but I do support and hope it passes.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Appreciate your comments. Mr. Hancing?
John Hancing, Twenty-Second Street, I did my homework on this one. I, I found the code and these setbacks that are referenced. My problem with this is you're going to go from fifteen-foot setback, or on the side, to seven-foot, and yet we have people who complain about flooding. Basically, in lay terms, if you go down to seven feet for a side setback, that means somebody could build a house within seven foot of his property line, seven foot in the other property line, you still got fifteen foot. I, I checked mine, too. So I'm looking at this, and I'm thinking, we're going to put more stuff on the ground where rain isn't going to be absorbed, or be able to runoff and create more flooding. I really don't understand what the point is, but given the fact that we have issues with flooding, and now we're trying to figure out where we're going to put pump station at the south end of the city, and we do get flooding at the north end, I'm opposed to this for the simple fact runoff from rain. We haven't had a bad storm yet. But the last one that came through last year while I was out of town, my rain gauge only had three and a half inches from that total storm. Because I use that to monitor what I need to do with irrigation, but I'm not for that, to that simple reason. You got to have more porous land to absorb the water.
Thank you, Mr. Hancing. Any other citizen comments? For council, I need a motion to approve ordinance twenty-four-dash-zero-three. Do I have a motion?
Some of them.
Motion made by council member Elliot, do I have a second? I'll second. Second by council member Baker. Councilmember Elliot, you have the floor.
I just wanted to respond to, I was just saying that this particular change affects literally only three lots in the city. And houses, I believe, are already on these lots, and I think it is a change to make things consistent among our homeowners throughout the city.
Thank you. Other comments or questions?
I was under the same impression you were of this, and any new construction, it has to be, it's ten, ten foot above sea level, it's a hundred year mark, I guess. And most people go down to fourteen feet, now five hundred year mark. So it still does reduce the drainage, depending on how much concrete's poured. I do have a problem with that. But again, this is, this is really so specific, this ordinance. If I'm wrong, tell me.
It's one lot. The lots two, three, and four are all base I part.
Okay, because I can support that, but I sympathize with citizens who are trying to do that.
We do have an appropriate surface ratio that every lot has to follow, that plays into that.
Thank you. Mr. Roberts?
Kyle, do we know why it was ever initially, do we know why it was initially fifteen feet? Was there a specific reason for that, that anybody knows the history of?
Was there a specific reason for that, that anybody knows the history of?
I think originally, one investment company owned all of lots before we got the community trust grant where we got money from federal government to purchase the three lots for a park, okay? I don't know that far back. Okay. It is the only 15-foot side setback, the largest side setback in the rest of the city is 10 feet. And that's on the north end, there's not one side setback that is 10 feet on the south. So it does match all of Bella Beach units A, C, D, E, and D on the south end.
Okay. So I should have checked this myself, so is that lot currently built on it?
Yes.
So the house is over there?
Yes.
So this, unless he was to tear it down, we built the house. This allows him to have, I don't know, if you want to place a shed or some guy covering off of his house, it allows him to get a little closer to that property line.
Right.
Than he normally could.
Do you have a manhood area that you could protect?
What is that?
Yeah, I just have the, I'm just wondering.
Is the house next to the park?
So, yeah, it's 907 Arbor. As you can see, he's got 15 feet, which is a pretty big. Can't see the house next to the, um...
So the Planning, Planning &amp; Zoning Board made this recommendation as well? Did you have to go out and work with them and present the demand?
Yes.
So I didn't, I met with Kyle and okay, had a discussion with Kyle and made the request because I, it really was a question, why is my lot the only lot in the entire city of Bella Beach that has a 15-foot setback? And literally, he looked at it, he couldn't believe it, and it's the only house that has a 15-foot setback.
Okay.
So I just said that we made it the same as the rest of the city.
Okay. But is the size of the lot in relation to the others? Yeah, I'm asking. We need the property appraisal to sign up.
Mr. Roberts, more to your inquiry, just as a point of education, I'll do this. In terms of what we're doing here, it's a legislative change, not a variance. And so the gentleman or the property owner, the someone positioned, would not ordinarily go before the Planning &amp; Zoning Board beyond the same interest he has here as a member to comment on it. It's not an application for relief that he's seeking. But you know, it's just a much safer policy. I just, while we've got the downtime, give you a opportunity to clarify that difference.
Thanks. So you can see the dimensions of the lot are the same, most lots are about 110 feet. It's 110 on the side, 114 on the other. And it's close to 100 line at the front and 110 on the back. If you look at some of these other houses, they're not quite the same size lot. You can see that they all have a little bit smaller setbacks to go closer to the property lines.
Do you think that the setback was put in place to prevent building bigger?
It's hard to say, I mean, you can union two lots and build a big house if you've got two lots next to each other. We have larger sized lots, you go north into the city, that might be the largest lot in the south. But as you can see with some of these houses, you know, this may be the biggest in the city.
And what is the flooding issue in that area?
I mean, I don't have the exact square footage of what difference that setback would make, but like I said, the improved surface ratio, 0.65, is gonna apply to every lot. So if you know this is size, it's the same ratio. I'm not sure whether we would... You know, he's still up to the same standards.
I might point out also that this lot is waterfront as well as adjoining a creek. And that many of the improvements that are there are, I mean, surfaces, some of their payers are on the concrete. So I, for one, am very concerned about flooding, but I don't think this house is one that is contributing significantly to it. Where we do have the flooding, however, is in front of that house, in the drain house, where the stormwater drains. And that's what the project is about, the park, is this flooding that goes from the front of that in the street and backing up into the other resources.
Alright, thank you. Any other comments? Alright, well, let's just, let's take it to a vote. Renee, please call the roll.
Councilmember Bankard?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Elliott?
Aye.
Mayor Gaddis?
Aye.
Alright, so that ordinance passes and we'll vote again on that next one. Now we're on to item number 14, consideration of ordinance 24-04. Mr. Moore, please read the ordinance and give us a brief summary.
Happy, Mr. Mayor, one moment, please. This is ordinance number 24-04, an ordinance of the City Council, the City of Bella Beach, Florida, amending the Bella Beach Code of Ordinances, Subpart B, Land Development Code, Chapter 94, zoning, Section 94-172 fences, and Section 94-251 fences, walls, and hedges, to allow for fences, walls, or hedges on seawall cap to provide for implementation, providing for resolution conflicts, providing for separability, providing for an effective date. This has been a first reading ordinance, number 24-04, by title only. And again, turning to substantively, you're amending two sections so that they're consistent with each other. But both of these involve allowing for fence, so you can see on page 2 of 6, the second paragraph, 94-172 sub-B. The language has changed now, so the fence shall also be permitted on, but not beyond, the waterfront-facing side of the seawall cap to a height of 48 inches. There was some discussion and work sessions about this desire, especially when you consider pets and other small children who might go across such caps and why those things may wish to be extended. That was some of the, do more discourse on that, again, this is a policy decision for you. And then in 94-251, fences, walls, and hedges, you can see in sub-2, there's been language added to say fences, walls, and hedges shall be permitted on, not placed beyond or overprobing the waterfront-facing side of the seawall cap. So if you want to use the dimensions of your seawall cap, you can. This does not give you license to extend it out or have absolutely solid fence, as I said, several inches beyond your seawall line around the block. If you wanted to be flush with your seawall cap to cover that space, you can do so should this attachment amendment be adopted. And that's the language you have. This is a longer amendment only because I included the entirety of Section 94-251, all the subsections, the only subsection being amended substantively, subsection 2, that spans pages 2 and 3 of 6 of this order, pages 153, 152, and 153 of the PDF, retracted that. So there's a bunch of other numbers after there, that's just for completeness. So there's no mystery as to what the rest of that section states. Otherwise, if it passed tonight, this would go to the second reading for your ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Let's go to the citizens for comments. Anyone like to comment on this ordinance? Alright, citizen comments are closed. Need a motion to approve ordinance 24-04?
Some moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Roberts, do I have a second? I'll second. Seconded by Frank Baker. Mr. Roberts, you have the floor.
I just think it makes sense, I don't think it's a big deal, but I think it makes sense. And as Mr. Moore said briefly, when he was doing that, that in the parts of issues with kids being on it, that type of thing, so it makes sense to be able to, be able to put a fence. Dimensions did not change, so it's not like the neighbor's gonna be obstructed now because of this change. I think it makes sense.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Any other comments?
My question about this is whether the integrity of the seawall would be protected. Really, that if we put a fence there, we're gonna have to drill into it and somehow fix the fence? And how long will the seawall be protected?
I have a neighbor who just installed a new fence and I don't think they fully understood it. So it does extend a little further, but the sea cap then stopping before it. But the post that holds the entire fence in place is in the ground, not in the seawall. As far as the purpose for this, everybody's got a dog in this city. And if you don't block that seawall, or the sea cap, they're gonna just snake around, they're gonna come into your yard, or you're gonna be piling up, like I did for years, bricks and blocks and everything else that's falling into the, into the water and it just looks awful. I see nothing wrong with this, I think it's a good idea. Any other questions or comments? No? Alright. Renee, let's take it to a vote, please.
Councilmember Bankard?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Elliott?
Aye.
Mayor Gaddis?
Aye.
So that one passes unanimously and we will vote on this one again next one. Alright, item number 15, this is for consideration, authorizing a purchase order for engineering services to replace the South Park seawall. Mr. Riefler?
Thank you, Mayor. So after we completed 7th Street park and 16th Street park seawalls, South Park was the next one on the list. I included some pictures, it's very obvious, it's a very old seawall. It's got a lot of spalling, a lot of cracking, mostly cap value. But, you know, at each joint of the concrete slabs, it's separating. So we have been budgeting money to replace our seawalls and this has been on the corrective action list for the Department of Recreation Board for two years now. So it's been noticed and this would be to start the design to go up to bid to get the seawall replaced.
Thank you, Mr. Riefler. Let's go to the citizens for comments, if anyone would like to speak on this topic. I can say some comments are closed. Council, I need a motion to authorize a purchase order for engineering services to replace the South Park seawall.
Some moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Elliott, do I have a second?
I do.
I'll give that one to Mr. Bankard. Ms. Elliott, you have the floor.
Sounds perfectly sensible to maintain our seawalls and so this is part of that process.
Thank you. I have a question. Just because, I don't know what the real difference is between a city-owned piece of property versus private property, but generally, well, in fact, as you know, I'm working on getting a new seawall now. I just hired a local company and they did it all. Is there a specific reason why we have to do engineering services with one company to hand the project off to another company that might have done that anyway?
Mainly because, and I'm turning more from here from wrong, it's mainly because we need to have the plans so that we, because of the price of the project, we know that it's gonna sell, that needs to be made it out. So it's to get that, all the, you know, plan, design done so that when we release the bid, you know, all that taken care of. And then any company that comes and replaces seawalls can use that from the bid.
So it's perfectly specked out of how it's going to be done?
Yes, and then every bidder will have a, you save design to bid on, so that it's fair.
It's a, it just seems a little shocking to me, they cost $6,000 bucks to go, yep, you need a seawall and it's gonna look the same no matter how easy it is.
This does, you know, this does include the engineers coming out after three site visits to do the inspecting on top of what the county will already do as part of the permitting process. So it's actually a little, it's a little extra, being as public property, maybe shouldn't have been studied.
Correct. That's fine, that's fine. I was just, just curious.
There are multiple ways, Mr. Mayor, to get construction projects done. The time you did it, basically, like a design build, so you find one firm who does both of those, where you drill hard bid, you design it with company A, and then bid it out to multiple construction firms. There's three or four other ones you could use, but a simple thing like this isn't the way your city manager's gonna make some sense.
Alright, thank you very much. Any other comments? Alright, well, let's take it to, we'll just do it, we'll wish to vote on this one. All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Alright. Mr. Riefler, do you want to authorize to?
Yes, sir.
Unfinished business? Do you have any unfinished business?
No.
Alright, let's see here, now we're on to council comments. We're gonna start with Councilmember Elliott for this one.
I don't have a whole lot to say. I think we've accomplished a lot over the last month. We've gotten great input from our citizenry and I think we've reached some good decisions, so have a good night.
I agree. Mr. Roberts?
I do have something to say about the way, I just didn't have a good feeling or taste regarding how we handled the three citizens who stepped forward after we were really trying to get citizens to step forward to join the council. So I'm concerned that in the future, when we try to do something like that again, that we may have people that saw that and witnessed that and saw what happened, may deter other citizens from stepping forward. So it just bothered me, so I just wanted to talk about it a little bit and say, I hope that if we decide to proceed and bring on an additional council member or three, that other people will understand what we did and not be deterred from stepping up. Because I still think, and I think we all agree, that we'll probably need at least one more council member to be up here with us. And we're not saying necessarily that the three that applied earlier are done, I don't believe. So I just wanted to endorse my opinion on that because if I'm wearing their shoes and they did all the things that they did to step up and say, hey, I wanna be on the city's council, I think I'd bring something to the table, and nothing happened, I may not need to happen about that. So just wanted to voice that.
Thank you very much. Mr. Bankard, you're up.
I'm gonna take Ms. Elliott's time. Last one, I went to Bella Shores meeting because I spoke to Sheriff Louie here about Bella Beach residents who are busy with the beach, being moved to the beaches of the Bella Shores or in lay-out, just sitting with the sheriff. The sheriff noted he would inform his deputies that they should not move people sitting or lying in the beach considering there is no certified hygiene to wear. Actually, in the area, no certified erosion control idea. No improved markets, construction line by female, which is the seawall of the properties in that area. I do want to stress that this should be in no way telling anyone to approach themselves as close as possible to property of Bella Shores. This was further noted by the sheriff at that meeting. Also noted at the meeting was two complaints about Bella Beach, rating the beaches of the Bella Shores. One of the complaints is from Commissioner Stories noting he took out sea oats on his property. He lives all the way in the south end of the Bella Shores. Although I see pictures of our rating and truly that's not the case, the rate weren't from many feet away from the sea of his property. Another complaint from the west end of Bella Shores is that you possibly... Another complaint from the Beller Shores was that a bottle fell out of the raid, during the rape period, and it's left on her property. Just to note, me and this council went to the beach cleanup Saturday, and there was, what, six or seven containers of bottles, sound lights, and chairs in Beller Shores, and I guess people were just partying that night, just said, eh, oh, we'll just leave it here. So anyway, so also was, also noted at that meeting was the denial of air of the Beller Beach would be compensated with Beller Shores for any legal action they saw in their marks that are in Beller Beach. That was followed by one of the commissioners possibly suggesting removing the parking in the lots dedicated to the Beller Beach. I noted during citizens' comments, if that was the wishes of the commissioners, I would contact the American Disability Association and get their input. During the meeting, it was also noted during citizens' comments, Beller Shores ordinance 2201, which was addressed last year by a resident of Beller Beach. To sum up this ordinance, it allows Beller Shores residents to erect temporary structures of shade, et cetera, anywhere a leaded on noted beaches, while prohibiting residents of Beller Beach, et cetera, the same. Simply, ordinance 2201, I believe, is a council violates the federal Florida equal protection laws. After the meeting, I was thanked by all the commissioners for my input. I had a long talk with Commissioner Stories, who also lives at the first and southern house of Beller Shores, whose property is adjacent to the IRB 28th Street beach access. I told Commissioner Story that Beller Beach residents are not the problems, but mostly sensitive to Beller Shores issues, although we need to work together. I further noted that the resident that brought up 202201 ordinance is serious about filing a federal lawsuit. Beller Shores attorney needs to contact him sooner than later. I also emailed Beller Shores attorney the next day emphasizing this, and that Beller Shores was upset with legal cause in the other lawsuit, a federal one might not be covered under their insurance, and please seek out the resident to avoid the litigation. I've further sent a text to Commissioner Stories in this regard. Simply, I have not heard back since I sent this email. I further noted all this in this ordinance passed week, in hopes he could motivate the council. Taking this note, as a councilman like my colleagues, who plays a role in the federal state constitution, Beller Shores refuses to rectify 2201, I am compelling the board any suit which should be in Beller Beach residents' rights. I encourage that this board, their council, and their commissioners, look at that ordinance and work with Beller Beach.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. On that note, would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn? Motion made by Mayor, again. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Roberts. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Good night, everyone.